Gable, Mobile Police Department Special Operations Division Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I thought I would do a little something different today. I wanted to sing you a little prayer, make it kind of short because I know we have a lot of things to take care of. Jesus, we just want to thank you. Jesus, we just want to thank you. Jesus, we just want to thank you. Thank you for being so good. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Would you come to this meeting today? And may we honor you and may your name be glorified in everything that is said and done. We pray in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledgees to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask if we would observe a moment of silence. Tomorrow, we'll commemorate the 50th anniversary of the assassination of one of the greatest Americans to ever live, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was sadly killed on April 4th, 1968, Lorraine Hotel in Memphis, Tennessee. Were it not for his bravery, his courage, for his determination, his dedication to the cause, many of us who have the privilege of sitting behind his desk would not be here. So I'm going to ask at this time that we commemorate his life, legacy, and great work with a moment of silence. Thank you.
Rokoff, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Sval.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm certainly happy to see each and every one of you. The rules of the council are quite simple. We ask that you would silence all electronic devices, either that you turn it off or that you would silence. Any person desiring to address the council is asked that you would sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or appeal, or public hearing agenda item that you'd like to speak on. Anyone asking to address the council also is asked, particularly on a non-agenda item, to contact the City Clerk's office on the Thursday prior to the Tuesdays meeting that you would like to speak. That gives us enough time to have sufficient evidence brought before us to properly address your issue. We give each speaker five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate when you're at the four-minute mark. At that point, we ask that you begin summarizing, and at the ringing of the second bell, that you would take your seat expeditiously. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. We ask that all questions be directed to the chair, and if any member of the council or the administration would like to subsequently speak, they'll have that ability. To maintain decorum, we ask that there be no undue applause and/or public outcry. Thank you all so much for taking time, coming to take interest in your city government. Madam City Clerk.
Approve of minutes of March 27. So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approve.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everybody.
Good. Councilman Manzi got you all all fired up on answering, "Good morning." Very good. I have some special proclamations this morning, and at this time, I would ask Kerry Comanis to please come down and join me. One of the privileges of being the mayor is the opportunity to work with some superstars that work for the City of Mobile that were here long before I had started working for the city. And so the proclamation that I'm going to read really is a reflection on one of those superstars. So Kerry, if you would join me right here, please. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Ms. Kerry Comanis has demonstrated great loyalty, acumen, and service to all Mobilians since August 30th, 2008, and whereas Kerry is responsible for working on numerous valuable projects and initiatives that have benefited the city in ways ranging from improving transportation infrastructure, to helping the city to eliminate blight, and whereas Kerry's diligence is priceless, but has resulted in more than millions upon millions in Tiger grant and restored dollars for the benefit of the citizens of Mobile, and whereas Kerry is known throughout the city's departments as hard-working professional who can be counted upon to strive greatly for the city's success, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby recognize Ms. Kerry Comanis with the Service Award of Excellence, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, this third day of April 2018." Just to touch on a couple of those points, the city applied for a Tiger grant three times, and the third half is the charm. And Kerry was the architect behind that. She was the one that had everybody collaborating to make sure that the third try that we got that Tiger grant. Also, Restore, the Department of Conservation, has run that program. But a little birdie has probably informed me that probably every day, the Department of Conservation was probably calling Kerry, asking her, really, how does this thing unfold? And so, Mobile being in the area, being a recipient of that and the distribution of those dollars, Kerry has just done yeoman's work in that regard. Now, we are giving this award today, but I am high hopes that with that track record, that it will prove successful in us being able to get, which is, this is not actually in her wheelhouse, but it's part of things that are happening to the city. But if we can get an Infra grant that would be the beginning of the bridge project, it would just be an amazing thing for what's been happening in our city for the last three years. So let's all give Kerry one more round of applause. One more.
No, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
You're good.
I love my job.
She loves her job. Okay, well done. Okay, so this time, I'd ask Brenda Carlisle with the Boys and Girls Club to please come forward. Brenda? And I think we have some of the youths of the year, maybe Tiffany Pogue, Jennifer Murdoch, Alex Moore, and Kayla Brown. Is that correct? Kyla?
Thank you.
I apologize for that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, Brenda. Okay. Whereas the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama has served youth and their families throughout Mobile County for over 61 years by providing structured, high-impact programs and activities in the core areas of education and career development, health and life skills, character and leadership development, sports, fitness and recreation, and the arts, leading to priority outcomes of academic success, good citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. And whereas every dollar invested in the Boys and Girls Clubs returns $9.60 in earnings and cost savings to the communities, and resulting in a proactive approach to the negative factors which impact youth and their families. And whereas the week of April 8th through April 14th is being celebrated in clubs throughout the nation as Boys and Girls Club Week, celebrating the outstanding accomplishments of club members, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby recognize the week of April 8th through April 14th as Boys and Girls Club Week. Congratulations. And Brenda, would you like to? And do we want to do a picture here? Brenda, why don't you get on the other side? And students, if y'all would come this way, we're looking at the camera right there. And we'll just let y'all hold that. Can y'all see? Everybody looking at this camera? Okay?
Oh, this camera.
Yeah, that camera, yeah. That one.
Very nice.
Good. I think that, was there one more back up there? Turn around. Do one more. Hold on. Thank y'all.
Mayor Stimson and members of the City Council, I want to thank you, first of all, for your many, many years, not only collectively as a group and as the administration, but also personally and individually. Every one of you has reached into your pockets personally. You've supported us many, many ways throughout our 60 years. We are now 60 years old. We will celebrate that anniversary this year. But the real, true people I want to thank today are the young people behind me. We only provide the opportunity, but they put in the time, the effort, they put their souls into it, they dedicate their lives to being the very best they can be, and you should be very proud of them. These young people behind me represent 4,000 young people we serve every year. I invite you to come by our club, tour it, drop in anytime. We'd love to see you. And let the kids tell you personally what you mean to each one of them, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And the citizens of Mobile, thank you. Next Monday, we will be having a telethon on WKRG. You'll have a chance to phone in and contribute to Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proclamation has to do with the National Day of Service, and we're very fortunate to have with us this morning, and an honor to have Senator Vivian Figures here, and also Representative Adeline Clark. But with them, we have RSVP, Foster Grandparent Program, and Senior Companion Program. So Senator and Representative, I would ask you, and whomever you think should join us at the podium, to please come forward.
Thank you.
Yep? So. Good morning. Good to see you.
We're with them this morning.
Oh, y'all are with them? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see y'all. Thank you for coming. Whoa. Okay. Okay, the proclamation for the National Service Day reads, "The City of Mobile benefits tremendously from the volunteer spirit of countless agencies, both large and small, local and national. And whereas the spirit of volunteerism is integral to the achievement and realization of the vision of One Mobile becoming the safest, most business, and family-friendly city in America by 2020. And whereas Mobilians have an unparalleled history in volunteerism, charitable giving, and cooperation, and whereas mayors across the United States are recognizing publicly appreciating community volunteers, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby thank all volunteers across the city and formally recognize National Service Day in the City of Mobile, done at the City of Mobile this third day of April 2018. Congratulations and thank you. And I would ask that any other representatives that would like to make a comment, please feel free to do so. Senator Figures, just kind of whispered in my ear that a number of years ago.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. She started the Foster Grandparent Program. So congratulations to all of y'all, and you too, Senator.
Mr. Jackson is going to speak.
Let's do this, real quick.
I'd like to say.
Before you speak, let's get through, so she can sit down. Anybody jump in?
Tighten up.
Gather in.
Nice.
Good thinking. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, on behalf, from the mayor to your council, on behalf of the foster grandparents, we would like to thank y'all for what all y'all do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, y'all can have another picture, another photo. I'll just all turn around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I would just like to have a comment.
Yes.
Like to say, nearly 22 years ago, Senator Figures had the position that I hold now on the council. She represented District 1.
Yes.
But when she moved on to the Senate, she had the opportunity to nominate someone to take her place. She had a number of very highly qualified people who wanted to be in this seat. Senator Figures recommended Frederick Douglass Richardson Jr. And it's because of her I am here. She's a tremendous woman, done an outstanding job. I put her up against any state senator anywhere in the nation.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, the next proclamation has to do with Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I would ask Katie Ritchie and Lori Rowland to please come join me. Okay. Whereas the Rape Crisis Center has provided comfort and support to sexual assault victims in this community for 41 years, facilitating awareness and education while offering high-quality assistance to those in need. And whereas the Rape Crisis provides 24-hour support to sexual assault victims and their families through direct services, preventive education, and professional training to all citizens of the City of Mobile. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center serves a cross-section of people from various races, social, economic, and educational levels. In 2017, the center provided 1,596 crisis phone calls, 163 hospital calls, office visits, follow-up victim support calls, court advocacy, family, friends, support, clothing, banks, dolls, bears given to the child victims, transportation information, referrals to community agencies. Now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby recognize the Rape Crisis Center and proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Mobile. Congratulations.
On behalf of the victims, survivors, and families that we serve, and all of us at the Rape Crisis Center, we thank each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much for what you did. Typically, I'm facing them because the ball spot on the back of my head seems to be growing. But it's great to face y'all today, okay? No disrespect to anybody in the crowd. Okay. Springing this week into the week of free film viewings, music, arts, and crafts, and lock-ins, and more. So we have spring break for Kids Days. Activities include arts and crafts, face painting, balloons, clowns, music inflatables, Fun Mobile, which will be starting, it was April 2nd through tomorrow, from 10:00 to 1:00, at Trinity Gardens Park, which is on Bank Avenue. And that's on Tuesday, it's at Trinity Gardens. Wednesday, it's going to be on Denton Park on Imogen Street. So we hope all the children will come out, all the students that are on spring break will join in those festivities. Also, Brown Bag in Beenville. Come out and listen to the soothing sounds of Grayson Capps as you dine in Beenville Square. That is tomorrow, from 11:30 to 1:30. And then, the Boys to Men Lock-In. Boys 9 to 17 are invited to this youth empowerment retreat featuring Speaker Bruce Griggs. The activities include games, pool, basketball, and movies. For more information, we ask that you would call 251-208-1652. That's 251-208-1652. They can only hold 50 boys, so reserve a spot as soon as possible. And that is April 4th and 5th, from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And that will be at the Figures Community Center. So I hope that our students will enjoy their spring break. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. And as they're leaving, I certainly join my colleagues in recognizing our state senators, Senator Vivian Davis Figures, and my state representative, Ms. Adeline Clark. Thank all of you for what you do on behalf of our city in Montgomery, and working so hard, so diligently on behalf of the people. Let's give both of them a big round of applause. Thank you.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have a special proclamation for a very special person, and if there's people in the audience to come and accept that, please come down and join me. This is for Rebecca. Jackie? I know they'll be celebrating this wonderful citizen who is no longer here, but very much here in spirit, and that is Rebecca Dokovich. And you are her husband. Okay, well, it's my pleasure to read this on everyone's behalf. And again, there will be a celebration of her life at 1:30 at the Senior Center. Whereas the Mobile Senior Coalition Board will celebrate and honor the life of the late Mrs. Rebecca Moreland Dokovich on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 1:30 at the Connie Hudson Mobile Regional Senior Community Center. And whereas for the last 11 years, Rebecca was a citizen of the City of Mobile and a dedicated servant to the aging and disabled population of our city. And whereas she tirelessly showed dedication to our senior citizens through various positions with Atria Regency, Care Patrol of South Alabama, and Northwest Florida, she served on Mobile Senior Coalitions Incorporated Gulf Coast Dementia Services, and dedicated countless hours to the Alzheimer's Association, the Connie Hudson Mobile Regional Senior Community Center, the classy, sassy Ladies Red Hat Society, and PEO International. And whereas Mrs. Dokovich provided leadership, assembled teams and tools that enabled many members of our senior adult community to continue to raise their quality of life by assisting them during their difficult and complex transition through education, guidance, and support for seniors and their families. And whereas her true legacy lies in the profound effect she had on those whom she touched as a selfless servant, friend, mentor, and hero, exemplifying the noble endeavor to leave a place better than when she arrived, and doing so inspired all of us to do the same. Now therefore I, Best Rich Councilmember of District 6, along with the mayor and members of all the Mobile City Councilmen, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, as Mrs. Rebecca Moreland Dokovich Day in Mobile, and urge all citizens to join with us in this recognition, Mrs. Dokovich, for her legacy of caring, outstanding contributions for the imprint she left on our community.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes adoption.
Appeals. We have requests for wave-of-the-noise ordinance on June 2nd on Clemente Court, April 13th, 14th, and 15th on South Constepson Street, April 13th to 14th on Dalton Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to approve the application of Mallory Reed doing business as it's party time for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
Say, anyone here that'd like to offer any commentary relative to this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Chris Enzor regarding Resolution 37, 194 and 195. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
My name is Chris Enzor. I reside at 2305 Government Street, 36606. I'm the current president of the Loop Community Action Group, Precinct 1B12. I'm here to request denial of the two separate alcohol applications at 750 Holcomb Avenue. For last week's meeting, I provided a letter detailing facts regarding the location. I hope that you all had a chance to read that. Over the years, with input from our various enhanced neighborhood police officers and precinct captains, we've taken every action we could regarding ordinance violations in hopes of getting the location to go by the rules of the city. Since 2012, this neighborhood has had to deal with loud vehicles and loud people, litter, loitering, traffic violations, and violence in and around this specific location. While preparing for speaking today, I found there were many unanswered questions. Number one, the relationship of the applicant, Mr. Kong, to the current owners of the property. Manager, employee, co-owner, what? Was he an employee when the police department raided in March of 2017? Was he an employee when he was arrested in June of 2017? What type of relationship will Mr. Kong have if he's granted this business license? Is he leasing the property, buying the property? I looked up the requirements for the ABC application and city license, and it says specifically, there must be a signed document regarding the property ownership. Was a site plan submitted? I actually called to ask about that. Didn't get an answer, but anyway, that too is a requirement. So we, as our community action group, have these questions, and my question to you is, do you have all these answers? And the last question I have is for you to answer, as for approval of the license, no. And actually, I will also say, on my way in today, I saw Mr. Kong, I introduced myself, and I asked a few of these questions. So I explained that I was going to request denial and ask him, could he succeed in business at this location without an alcohol license? He said no. But how will we know if we don't try? Any questions?
I would just like to thank Ms. Enzor for coming down here today and taking time out of her busy schedule to address us. And as she mentioned, she has provided a detailed letter. I'd also thank, which I have asked, by the way, be made a part of our record today.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Ms. Enzor most of all, you're giving us the Reader's Digest version of your letter today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. No.
No.
No, it's just one.
We just have the one?
No. No, she signed it.
She signed it. This isn't, this isn't the right time, Mr. Kong.
Well, I mean, it's, you know.
Did he sign in?
He did not sign in. I don't know if he knew he could have signed in.
Well, he didn't sign in. He didn't sign in. Let's move on.
Consent resolutions held over. Thirty-seven, one ninety-four, and one ninety-five recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license for Kong Package Store on Holcomb Avenue, Suite B, and recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Kong Convenience Store on Holcomb Avenue, Suite A.
Some move.
Motion and second, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, sir.
President, since the owner applicant is here, can we just hear from him as possible?
It'd be a violation of our rules.
Not, not at this point. It'd be, it'd be a personal privilege being requested by Mr. Small.
Well, in light of that, in light of the personal privilege requested by Councilman Small, uh, we're going to hear if, uh, from the applicant briefly. Uh, come on down. Uh, typically and customarily, you would have needed to have signed in, but, but you may not have been aware of that, and then.
Hi, City Council. Sorry about, I don't know how about the come here to sign, so, um, sorry. So, my name's Petra Kong. I would like, try to apply to the BNY license for the address seven five zero Holcomb Avenue. Yeah, I, I heard she say like my store is like kind of noisy or busy. Yeah, I don't know about my, oh, the own, all owner, they take care, but where I get that license, I got to run the business. I will keep it quiet and no laundry and always, all the locations are clean. So, yeah. So, I, I try to do best I can do for my business license. Let's see.
Any questions for Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Kong, are you currently employed at that location?
Uh, I, I just come there like six months to see the business how they going up, and I decided to take the over for my, the, the old owner. I'm not a employee. I just go there and look, look the business how they go, like, they, they go through.
But, but you have worked there in the past?
Uh, yeah, just come work like couple, couple months, yeah. Training about how the business do. Yeah, I'm, I'm the new, so I don't know how the business go, so I had to come and learn.
But you were working there last year, correct?
Yeah.
And you were working there at the time, were you working there at the time you were arrested last year?
No, no. I'm not, I'm not over there. I'm, I'm no idea what's going on with that, you know? I'm not working at there. And in the, the time the rest, I'm not there. I'm, I'm outside overseas. So, when I come back, the, the miss, uh, one does, she calling me like the rest of my name, so I have no idea about that. And I get everything that completely is like the test is denied, they clear, so, yeah.
But what is your, what, are you going to have any ownership in the, in the store itself?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna own the store or lease the store?
No, no, I'm running. I'm, I'm renting, I'm renting.
Rent. And are you gonna have a written lease agreement with the owner of the real property?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
So, we had a motion, a second. We opened it up for discussion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
This, this matter came before the council last year. And, uh, so we've, we, particularly I have had an opportunity to look into this, uh, application at some length. Uh, I'm advised that the Alabama Code authorizes the council to deny any application where the license will create a nuisance, is detrimental to adjacent residential neighborhoods, will create traffic congestion, or any other reason that poses a risk to surrounding neighborhoods or to the public health, safety, and welfare. As I said, I've reviews, reviewed the records and listed, and listened to all of the comments made today. And, uh, I'm going to vote to deny this application for the following reasons. Uh, the premises at seven fifty Holcomb Avenue are currently owned by Mr. uh, M. Sonith and Shen De Suu who purchased the property in December two thousand and ten. In April two thousand and eleven, uh, Mr. M. Sonith and Mr. Nashib Umar created an Alabama Limited Liability Company known as M. Sonith LLC for the purpose of operating a convenience store on the premises known as My Boys Convenience Store. Before Mr. Sonith's purchase of the store in two thousand and twelve, it was used as a medical facility and before that, a daycare center. My Boys is primarily, primary business is the sale of liquor, wine, and beer for off-premises consumption. It is located in the Loop area, which is an older neighborhood that was developed in the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties and is characterized by small lot subdivisions composed of single-family residences. My Boys is Zone B three, and liquor sales is permitted use in that zone. However, the site is adjacent to and abuts several single-family residential properties. The site does not meet current codes for buffering and landscaping. The site is located at the convergence of Glenwood, Holcomb, and Glossom Streets, an area traditionally occupied by small retail stores that supported the surrounding neighborhood. The area has degraded over time and currently suffers from vacant and blighted properties and crime. According to records from the Mobile Police Department, there have been numerous calls for service at the location, including drug activity, discharge of weapons, domestic violence, and noise. I asked for a list of all of the calls that the police have made to this location over the last three years. This is the list. The list is literally as long as my arm. The Loop Community Action Group, and we are fortunate enough to hear Ms. Enzor, who has ably led that group for many, many years, is an association of concerned neighbors and has been tracking problems at the location since two thousand and twelve. As I mentioned, as she mentioned, she provided to the council a letter and a list of the agenda items from the Loop group meetings over the last number of years where this item, where this, uh, location had come up repeatedly as having problems associated with it. I would also add that I have over the years since I took office, heard from the neighborhood about this location, and there have been all sorts of unwholesome activities going on there. Loitering, uh, cigarettes sold by the, by the unit instead of the pack, uh, public urination, violence, all kinds of bad things at that location. The council, uh, denied the application in June, uh, twenties, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen because, among other things, Mr. Kong had been arrested for selling drug paraphernalia. In two thousand and seventeen, Sonith LLC proposed to transfer the business and liquor licenses to Mr. Kong, who proposed to change the name of the business to Kong Convenience Store. According to the criminal complaint, Mr. Kong, while working as a clerk for My Boys Convenience Store, sold a glass tube and copper mesh. These items are deemed drug paraphernalia because they are commonly used to facilitate the smoking of crack cocaine. On September seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Kong appeared before the District Court of Mobile County, Alabama. The court placed him on good behavior until January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, after the expiration of the good behavior period. The charge against Mr. Kong was null and prost. There is nothing in the record to show that Kong's convenience store will be operated any differently than My Boys. Therefore, I ask my colleagues to join me in denying this transfer. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any, any further discussion? If not, uh, let's vote, all in favor? All in opposition?
No.
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 Uh, the, both items fail.
Resolutions held over. Zero one, zero seven two, zero nine, zero seven three. Authorized project agreement for golf hauling and construction for receiving, processing, and disposal of residential trash and reallocate monies from general fund to trash department hauling to pay monthly invoices to waste management per settlement.
Move to layover until May eighth?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero one, two one five. Authorized non-exclusive franchise agreement with Neutron Holdings doing business as Lime Bike for use of city streets and rights of way for bikes sharing services.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. Um, I learned about this initiative, um, through the press and look forward to their activity in our city. Um, I do have some concerns about some of the areas in our city not being particularly bike-friendly as of today. And I'm hoping, and in talking with other council members and even the mayor, I was not there to, um, at the ground floor of this initiative, but certainly, like I said, appreciate this business, um, offering their services to our community. Is the fact that, perhaps that they look at starting strictly downtown so that, um, our visitors and even our residents can come and enjoy a biking atmosphere. And that is an area that's more self-contained, so to speak, and has a lot of things going on all the time to attract people to that area. And the bicycles will add a nice dimension. As far as going out throughout the city, that will be allowed, but I hope that it's done with responsibility from both ends of the spectrum, both the company and citizens, to enjoy this business. And I wish them most success.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Zero one, two one six. Authorized agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to transfer ownership and maintenance to the city portions of Bay Bridge Road relocation from US Highway forty-three to Constepson Street.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Zero nine, two one seven. Reallocate monies from general fund to Parks and Recreation Department Athletics to offset the fee for, um, baseball team registration fees, uniform, and equipment purchases for Crawford Murphy Park Sports.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to make a point that are we reallocating money, money from, um, the general fund?
This, this is, uh, my discretionary.
Okay, got you. I'm in.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Thirteen, two one eight. Authorized change order to the contract with McElany Construction Company for water street, complete streets, project concrete sidewalk.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Twenty-one, two one nine. Authorized contract with Summers Roofing and Construction Company for playhouse in the park re-roofing.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Twenty-one, two twenty. Authorized contract with Bill Smith Electric for Herndon Sage Park Basketball Court Lighting.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that this, um, project has been long awaited. It has been probably more than a year since we completed the basketball court at Herndon Park. And you can go by there any night, and you will see kids up there still playing basketball with, with not enough lights. So, we applied to get, uh, night lighting up there as we have for soccer and the other sports. And today, we're going to put on this contract to, uh, put new lighting at Herndon Park. And I think this is going to be grand. In fact, uh, when we get ready to cut the lights on, I'm probably going to ask the police department, uh, to play a game with the fire department to kick off, uh, the new lights. I want this to be in conjunction with the new lights. And we're, we're going to invite all of the people in the general area that is interested in basketball to come out, but I want to have a game, an official game. See, can we get the police in the fire group to play ball? This, this is big. And, uh, I've been, I've, in, in the Midtown area, I've received, um, mobile inquiries about lights at this park and any, any other venue we have going on. This is big. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Twenty-five, two two two. Accept a permanent drainage easement, permanent sidewalk easement, and permanent utility easement from Westwood Plaza.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero three, two two three through sixty-two, three seven.
Motion to suspend roof from any consideration of round two zero three, two two three through six oh two, three, seven.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As consent resolutions, um, these will all be taken together. Zero three, two two three. Reappoint Vickery Jones to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled. Appoint Susan Carley to the Mobile Historic Development Commission. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Rite Aid on Airport Boulevard. For a beer-table wine off-premises-only license for the Rite Aid on Dolphin Street. For a beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Rite Aid on US Highway ninety west. For a beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Rite Aid on South Anne Street. For a beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Rite Aid on Cottage Hill Road. For a beer-table wine off-premises-licensed for Rite Aid on Dolphin Island Parkway. For beer-table wine off-premises-licensed for Rite Aid on Market Road, Suite one hundred. For beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Rite Aid on Cottage Hill Road. For a retail beer-table wine on off-premises-licensed for Rouse's Market on Airport Boulevard, Suite six oh nine. Recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a nonprofit tax-exempt license for Crawfish in the Courtyard on Government Street. For issuance of a lounge retail class-two package store license for being a package store on Spring Hill Avenue. Sixty-two, three six. Determining expenditure of discretionary funds for contribution to the Memms Park Athletics that serves a public purpose and approved payment, and approve special award of, award of special bonus to firefighter of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one, two, three, eight.
By Councilwoman, this item will live for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero one, two, three, nine, through thirty-seven, two, four, three.
All said, resolution will live for one week by Councilwoman.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one, two, four, four. Call for public hearing to rezone property at nine twenty-one Dolphin Street and nine twenty-six Conti Street, north side of Conti Street, two hundred and thirty feet east of Common Street, extending to the south side of Dolphin Street, two hundred and eighty-five feet east of Common Street, from R one and B one to L B two, to eliminate split zoning. This is scheduled May first.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you. Uh, I, I'd just like to announce that on, um, April the ninth, they will start with the tennis court at Figures Park. And soon thereafter, they would start constructing the new basketball court at Figures Park. Uh, we just heard about lighting coming to Sage Park. So, it's a lot of good things is happening in District One. But today I have on my "We Will Not Fail" button. Just like to take a moment to talk about that. I was invited to be the Black History Speaker for LaFlore, LaFlore High School. One of the things I talked about was that that school had been placed on a failing list. And I went on to show them a picture of the school that I went from the first through the ninth grade. It's a two-room school. They put a curtain in the room to make it three rooms. Each teacher taught three grades. When it, when this word knocked out, it's a school that you wouldn't hardly put your corn in. Looked like a barn. It was a failing school by all accounts. No lunch room, no bathroom. But that's where we had to go. And then, I was bused to high school. I was supposed to been bused to a high school. Connecticut County had four high schools. I couldn't attend any. They bused me to a training school. That was a- That was a failing school. I pointed them, "You would have to fail yourself. Can't no school fail you. If you quit, you will fail. As long as you keep on going, you will reach your goal." So I told them that I was going to make some buttons for them that would say "We Will Not Fail." Well, they were testing. They were going to test the 11th graders. So I received a phone call to ask, "Could I bring the buttons to the school to pin on each student in the 11th grade" before they took the test? I presented the buttons. They put the buttons on all of the students before they took the test. And then the 9th, 10th, and 12th grade students said they want buttons. Had buttons made for every student, all 700 students at the school. And they invited me to come up to present the buttons. And what I didn't know is that they had assembled all of those classes together and they asked me to come and talk to all of them. And when I walked in, those kids were chanting "We Will Not Fail." It was a defining moment. And I believe that the students at the Flore High School will not fail. In fact, the principals at Booker T. Washington and Chestland, I have four failing schools in District 1. And principal of those failing schools appeared at the Flore saying, "We want buttons." To say "We Will Not Fail." So we're in the process of getting them buttons. And I just want to show off my button today that says "We Will Not Fail." Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Mrs. Gregor?
No, sir.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes, thank you. I just would like to remind citizens in District 6, especially those along the corridor of Hillcrest between Greelot and Cottage Hill, that my office is still taking the form. If you need the form, you can contact me or secretarial in the council office. Until April 12th, this goes along with the plan for Hillcrest Traffic Access Management. Looking forward to hearing from many of you. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Richardson has stated earlier about failing schools. And unfortunately, I do have one in my district that is identified, which is B.C. Rain High School. But what I'd like to say is that, you know, that was one particular test, which they put it out there about failing schools. There are several tests that are taken throughout the year, but we have not heard anything about those tests. And we also don't even hear about the positive stuff that goes on, especially at B.C. Rain High School, about the achievement that the students are taking there. We cannot just beat one particular test like a dead horse. But we also have to focus on the positive stuff too. Your attitude sets your altitude. And when you keep on saying failing to these students, it's kind of getting them a negative vibe. But we also got to speak also positive to the students for their attitudes and the test scores can continue to grow up. But I'd like to piggyback and like to also say thanks to Councilman Richardson for investing into his schools in his district by giving them pins to encourage them to keep going higher, as we all should as citizens of Mobile. I would like to thank all the citizens on last Tuesday for coming out to Maryvale Elementary School for our district meeting. It was a very productive meeting. I also like to thank Maryvale Elementary School staff and principal for even providing the refreshments for the citizens. It was a great meeting. Many citizens have learned things they did not know. I also learned some things I did not know. And it was a great meeting. Looking to have another meeting towards the end of the summer. Also, on this past Saturday, District 3 has celebrated its sixth annual Easter egg hunt. It was a great success. Hundreds of kids showed up. I'd like to thank Mrs. Amberly Harris of Cumulus, also along with WBLS, WGOK, WDLT. Also would like to thank the Port City Second Liner's Waterfront Rescue Mission, the Buffalo Rock, the Brothers of the Capa Alpha Phi fraternity, Compass to Life Studio 221, Blue Bell Ice Cream Inspire You, Flower Fantasies and Gifts, the Ladies of Zeta Phi Beta, Gulf Coast Challenge, the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, and all the volunteers. Also like to thank Judge Home Whitney, the City of Mobile Police and Fire Department. And also I'd like to thank the Mosquito Authority. Mosquito Authority had contacted me on last Monday and say, "Hey, we want to come out to Taylor Park and we want to spray for mosquitoes." So not only that, we have plenty of hot dog and ice cream and soda pops and Easter egg. We also was protected from mosquitoes. So I'd like to give a special thank you and shout out to Mosquito Authority for coming out to Taylor Park and spraying the park. But we was mosquito-free on last Saturday. I'd like to say to Councilman Richardson also that, you know, he always talking about Trinity Garden Martyr's Parade and how many people, thousands of people attend that one event that he has for one particular part of his district.
Seven, 3,000.
I'd like to also state that District 3 has a family-friendly event for all of its citizens. We don't exclude one particular community like Trinity Gardens. We include everybody. So that's why that we have the District 3 Easter Egg Hunt, District 3 Back-to-School Jam, District 3 Christmas Parade, and et cetera. But again, I'd like to thank all the citizens and also the kids for coming out on last Saturday for their, this great success. It was pretty weather. You can't ask for anything better than we did, had on last Saturday. Also, on this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to two sunrise services. The first one was with the DIP Minister Alliance at the Pine Crest Cemetery at 6:30 a.m. Attended the sunrise service there. Left there and went over to the Rock of Faith Missionary Baptist Church, which is also located in District 3, where they had a tri-service sunrise service with the L. Belph, the Primitive Baptist Church, and also Ain't Well Baptist Church. Both services were well-attended and were very spiritual. And again, I'm looking forward to going next year as I have been doing for the past several years. On this coming Saturday, I will be bringing greetings at the Annual Crate Murder Trail Bike. This will begin at 8 o'clock a.m. with registration. The bike, the trail run, excuse me, the trail, bike trail will start at 8:30 a.m. Anyone that is interested in to participate in the bike trail, please come at 8 o'clock a.m. Or you can also register online at the Crate Murder Trail. The cost of it is $10 for pre-registration and a day of is $15. Kids 13 and under ride for free. Again, this will be the Annual Crate Murder Trail at the Arlington Park, which is located on Broad Street. And it's a great event. Last year was hundreds of bike riders and I'm specing for it can be a bigger this year. Also, I would like to remind all the citizens, not only just in District 3, but throughout the city of Mobile, that if you see any overgrown grass, to please call 311. We are know that we are now experiencing April showers. And we all, we have a saying, "April showers bring May flowers." But April showers also bring grass and weeds for May, June, and July, and August. So asking all citizens to please report any overgrown grass that you see, not just in District 3, but throughout the city of Mobile. I have received many calls about overgrown grass. And then one thing about the council members that we also have to dial 3112. But we are asking that each and every once, every citizen, you know, throughout the city, to please call 311 if you see any overgrown grass that is currently growing in your neighborhood. And remember that District 3 is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I'll be considerably shorter than my colleague, the representative from District 3. I'd like to thank all of those who, all those citizens who showed up at my district meeting last Tuesday. We had a good district meeting. We had discussed a lot of topics of importance. Like to thank Mayor Stimson, Public Safety Director Barber, and Public Services Director Harkins, who were also there and fielded 90% of the questions. I appreciate their attendance. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I just want to remind citizens of District 2, we have not had a community meeting in this quarter. We will in the summer. But in the interim, if you're in need of any services, reach out to me, 509-4239. Call the office, 208-7411. And we'll do our absolute best to connect you with the right department. Appreciative of each and every one who worked so hard in all of our Easter services. Easter egg hunts, various ones. I participated with one with the Mobile City Federated Women and Youth Clubs on, on last Saturday. That was a great success. Glad that so many positive things are happening, not only in our district, but in the city as a whole. That concludes my announcements. Any further announcements from the administration? Now, your motion?
Some move? Second.
Problem motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mina Jern?